Ms. Merle, the next net meeting is supposed to be on Thursday, the whatever, Thursday. I'm going to email everybody who said they can do the Thursday, the following week. Do I think it's the 16th is what it's supposed to be, but it's, I'm asking if-
The 17th?
No, it'll be the Thursday after, the 20th.
Okay, I'd like to get started. I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting of March 8th. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? And I would like to amend the position of a couple of things. We have Ken Bogrand and Libby Gibson here, and they actually have lives, and so we'd like to get them out of here. So I am going to do the C under presentations, and then we'll move from there to vote on it, if that's okay with everybody. Does the motion to approve is amended?
It's so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Comments from the public? Not seeing any. Why don't we move into the surplus vote, or actually, the superintendent's report?
Okay. Do you have anything you want to say first, or not?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, so I wanted to share a little bit about the AASA conference that I attended between February 17th and 19th. It is the National Superintendent's Conference, and it was in Nashville, Tennessee this year. I had some great learning sessions that I attended. I heard some wonderful keynote speakers and enjoyed meeting and networking with other superintendents around the country. And generally, one takeaway that was really important to me was that we were really all in the same boat over the last year and a half. We hadn't seen each other, people hadn't seen each other for two years. And it was just, it was just nice to know that others were, had, had been going through some of the same things that I had gone through and that other colleagues had gone through, so. The theme of the conference was Leading for Student-Centered Equity-Focused Education. I do have the conference program here. I'm welcome, you're welcome to take a look. I'll just pass it down. And I'll just give you a little bit of an overview of the, some of the things that I, that I attended. The theme of leading for student-centered equity-focused education certainly permeated throughout the entire conference through all the sessions, the roundtables, and the presentations. In the first day, I attended a session on student mental health, where I learned about what school districts in Virginia, Illinois, and Texas were doing to build stronger capacity in addressing mental health crises that are happening for youth, including providing special training on youth mental health first aid for school staff and administration, as well as parents and caregivers. That's an interesting course that you can actually take or provide for students, excuse me, for staff and for administrators, as well as parents, if interested. I also participated in an equity roundtable where our superintendents from Colorado and other places were comparing notes around DEI structures and programs in their schools. I asked about what districts were doing to increase the diversity of their teaching staff, because that's one thing that we are always looking to do in our, in our, in our district. So two superintendents from Colorado shared that their districts had sent representatives in person on a recruiting trip to some of the larger teaching colleges to market their districts and to attract more candidates of color. I also joined a session for women superintendents, and this was very uplifting. I learned that still today, only 26% of all superintendents in the U.S. are women, but that a recent article in the Harvard Business Review shared that women leaders have rated higher in handling critical situations like COVID-19 due to their care, concern, and emotional support for children and families. I went to a discussion about the nationwide shortage of school psychologists, so, social workers, and guidance counselors. So we are not the only district that is struggling to find these critical positions. I also attended a session called Getting Reading Right, where the presenter discussed the importance of instruction on phonics, which is missing in some cases across the country in the early learning stages. But she also highly recommended reading specialist support at the secondary level, middle and high school. One of the most interesting workshops that I attended was called Thinking Differently About Grading and Assessment, which really highlighted some of the flaws with our traditional numerical grading system that uses averages. And most of our middle and high schools today still use these ultimate, these, these grading systems. So there was a lot of support in this session about for standards-based grading and assessment, even at the middle and high school levels. And this allows student learning to be looped for standards mastery, which is the ultimate goal. For a keynote, it was very exciting to hear U.S. Secretary of Education Miguel, Miguel Cardonas, as he shared his insights on one of the most difficult years in education that has ever happened, and offered his steadfast support to the superintendents across the country for their leadership. Overall, it was a fantastic conference. I thank you very much for your support in permitting me to go. And I did eat some great delicious Tennessee barbecue while I was there. So that was really nice. I'm happy to answer questions if you had any. Otherwise, I'll move to enrollment. Okay. So enrollment this, this month is a slight decrease. We have seen us move from 1,690 students to 1,685. And most of these withdrawals have been at the high school grades, with other grades remaining fairly steady. So that's what we've got for enrollment.
Do we have, what happened to them?
We, I would have to investigate who the individual students were to find out what their reason for, for unenrolling, whether it was withdrawal for moving, or, and we can certainly find that information, but-
Yeah, because we used to get, did all-
Yep, that was always-
Reasons for a moment.
Zona was hot on that.
Okay.
It just, it helps us to-
So moving forward, if we have, if we have withdrawals, I can find out reasons as to why.
Mm-hmm, be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Surplus vote on 10 and 24 Surfside Road, Article 99. Diane, are you going to speak to this, or?
Actually, I am.
Okay.
Yes. So although this, a lot of this information predated me in the district, I'm sharing some information around this vote and this specific article that has been put out. So in 2018, the town approached the Kaiser family with regards to their property at 24 Surfside Road and asked if they had any interest in selling it. In the many meetings and months that followed, with the help of Andrew Vorse, Don Holgate, Ken Bogrand, Mike Cozort, and Diane O'Neal, the select board and the town manager, an agreement was made to acquire the 24 Surfside Road property for the schools in exchange for two things. Appraisals were completed on the property in early 2019, and the town made an exchange with the Kaiser family sometime in late 2019. The agreement that schools made were that we would renovate the NPS school parking lot, removing the driveway, the curb cut on Surfside Road, and installing a new driveway on Sparks Avenue. And that work was completed last summer. The second agreement was that the school would convey a small parcel of property to the town for roadway purposes. So with this vote, the school committee, the schools will obtain 24 Surfside Road, which is a 30,000, 390 square foot parcel, in exchange for the corner of Sparks Avenue and Surfside Road, a 9,908, 998 square foot parcel. The 24 Surfside Road parcel is extremely important to the campus-wide master plan, for it is the area where a new school is planned should the need arise. So that area is, is key to the campus-wide master plan moving forward if and when we need a new school. So that's some of the background, and certainly there can be some discussion. I know that Libby Gibson and Ken Bogrand are here, so they can answer questions or speak to it.
Ms. Merle?
I'm just, it sounds like a great plan.
All right.
I don't have any questions. I'm interested to hear Libby and Ken speak to this.
Yeah, is that appropriate to, Libby and Ken planning to speak to it? That'd be great.
Come up to the microphone up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee. This was the very first thing that I worked on when the town hired me in my new position as a real estate specialist for the town. And I met with Mike Cozort at the time, and he expressed to me the whole idea of the campus in terms that, that the school was building, and how important the properties around the edges in that particular area were to completing the, the concept of, of the campus. And so we got involved with the Kaisers. It took a fair amount of negotiation with respect to coming up with a solution that was workable for them, but also was workable for the town in terms of the finances involved, and the, and the ability to, in fact, provide the transaction that made sense from the town's point of view, but also from the school's point of view. And so the, as indicated by Chairman Ha, Superintendent Halet, the issue was there were two things that needed to be done. Number one was with, with respect to the parking lot and the access off of, at the corner there, because that was really very dangerous from everybody's point of view. And so we didn't look forward to, in fact, doing the, finishing the swap until that was done, until the new entrance was in. And so Diane and I talked about this was now the time for us to be able to move forward and proceed to complete the, the swap arrangement that we had entered into at the time that we went to acquire the property. So the town is really very excited about finally being able to complete this portion, because it's very important from everybody's point of view as to expanding the campus and, and, sorry, moving forward with your overall plan. And so it is our request that the motions that were drafted by Town Council be endorsed by you and allow us to complete the swap of the, of the two properties. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions?
So just, in my memory, I was on the, I was on the committee-
Yeah.
-when Mr. Burns did three presentations, I think, which involved the Bartlett Road Roundabout-
Right.
-he was proposing at the time, and then also the Roundabout, also at the intersection with the allowance of changing the cut of the community school hall entrance, as we've, as we've done. So my question would be, because I know at every single meeting that Mr. Burns presented, I think it was unanimous with the school committee at the time, that we felt that the Roundabout was not appropriate at either of the two locations.
Right.
So my, my only question would be, I, I'm fully aware, in fact, I remember meeting with Diane O'Neal and Rob McNeil before the cut actually happened, just to sort of go over again, and because Mr. McNeil hadn't been part of the original conversation, just to make sure that that right turn cut was still what was planned-
Right.
-onto Sparks Avenue.
Yeah.
So my, my only question would be that I would ask to, I guess, for the assurance that that's still the plan with the town, to do the right side cut over into Sparks Avenue, as opposed to a Roundabout.
That, that's correct. There's been no, since Mr. Burns left, there's been no discussions with respect to moving forward with the Roundabout. And in any event, if we were to move forward with that, we would have to go forward to town meeting, because there is no funding whatsoever with respect to that.
Right.
And we wouldn't be able to do that without any funding. In addition, there are no existing plans with respect to that. And my understanding is, is that, that it is a fairly complicated process, because in fact, it involves not only this, the property at the corner, it involves the property across the street and around the corner in order to be able to make that work. So at this point in time, there, there are no plans at all that are current, or that have been in discussion, that I'm aware of since, since Burns left with respect to, to that.
Okay. Okay. So the, the reason that this has come up now to us is because I thought, I thought we had voted on this, because I know it already went to town meeting, but I guess we haven't voted on this particular piece.
Well, the problem is, is that, that you're now in a position with respect, the town meeting authorized you to, to make a disposition to it. But there wasn't, there wasn't a, something for us, the town, to give to you to, in fact, create the swap, or to be able to do the transfer. And so, so that's the reason for us coming forward at this point in time, because we've identified the property that really works for you in terms of expanding your campus. And this helps solve a problem from the town's point of view with respect to a much smaller parcel of land. But also, it was designed to be able to protect the tree and protect the important aspects of that part of the campus.
Right, right. And just for our new members and for Catherine, this has been something that's been in conversation for a long time. And the tree on that corner, it was certainly protected, or the wish was to protect the tree.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we, we've, we've had several presentations, and we did feel that the Roundabout was not necessarily appropriate. But this is essential for the master plan to move forward, as I understand.
Yes, yeah.
So, thank you for explaining that, because that was something that I just have a question about. I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Burns never met a Roundabout he didn't like. And I think there were inappropriate places, and this was one of them. And the Bartlett Road, which was settled with three stop signs instead of multi-million dollar construction.
Construction, yeah.
Any more questions?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, at this point, I will use my prerogative to go to votes to be taken.
I'm organized getting your attention.
If you choose to make this motion and move to vote, if you could leave this until the minute, please. The matter in your mind.
There's a formal, formal motion.
Oh, thank you.
Move that the Town of Nantucket School Committee hereby determines pursuant to General Law's Chapter 40, Section 15A, that a portion of the town-owned land located at 10 Surfside Road, shown as Parcel 137 on the Assessors Map 55, shown as Parcel A, containing 9,996 square feet on the plan of land entitled Plan of Land in Nantucket, Mass., prepared for the inhabitants of the Town of Nantucket, Number 10 Surfside Road, Map 55, Parcel 137, prepared by Bracken Engineering, dated July 29, 2020, recorded with the Nantucket County Registry of Deeds, as Plan Number 2020-48. The surplus parcel currently held by the School Committee for School Purposes is no longer needed by the town for such purposes, being a portion of the land located at 10 Surfside Road, transferred from the School Committee to the Select Board for the roadway purposes pursuant to the vote of Article 77 of the 2018 Annual Town Meeting. And further, we authorize our chairman forthwith to give notices of this determined to the Select Board. So can we have a motion to that?
It's so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, so we'll move on to the High School Program of Study. Ready?
Do you have a motion?
The Student Success Plan will be coming up at another meeting, because Mr. Sellers can't be here.
Okay.
He looks fluffy. He does look fluffy.
Okay. This is always an exciting time of year for me, because it's the opportunity for us to talk with departments about what new and exciting courses they want to offer our students in the upcoming year. So this is always a fun time for me. So the process to making these changes, the first step is that we share with the departments the program of study from the previous year, or this current year. And we give them an opportunity to gather together and discuss what new courses would they like to offer, what courses would they like to maybe retire, either permanently or for a period of time, to make room for these new and exciting courses, and what adjustments they might want to make to descriptions of courses, adding new language that maybe better represents the course, or taking out language that no longer represents that course. During department meetings, the teachers discuss these course offerings, but we also invite the directors to these meetings to discuss with them what avenue we want our school to go in. So we're always trying to think of innovation. We're always trying to think about inclusivity and equity for our students. Are we providing equitable course offerings to our students? Are we providing courses that include our entire school population? And so it's important to have directors involved in those conversations as we think about innovation and how we grow and build our courses at Nantucket High School. So I'm going to be sharing with you all of the new courses that we're offering this year. And the full descriptions of those courses are in the Program of Study, which I believe you all have a copy of. And then we also shared, shared with you sort of our cheat sheet as we're going through program of study changes. I like to keep track for my own personal reasons, but also, so when I present, I know what I'm talking about. Any new courses that we're offering, any courses that we're retiring for the next school year, and any notes about upcoming program changes. So for math, our math department, we are including Principles of Algebra and Geometry. This is a course for students who need just a little bit more extra time with algebra concepts, so that they are better prepared to move on to upper math offerings. In the science department, we had lots of conversation with Dr. Bardley about, with the direction that we want our science department to go in, in collaboration with the science teachers. And we have decided on a Principles of Biomedical Science. So this is a new offering for our, for our students that will provide them exposure to concepts in the biomedical science field. And then we also decided to include an introduction to physics. This will be offered for our freshman students, so freshmen coming into the high school, instead of automatically being enrolled in biology, will have the opportunity now to choose biology or an intro to physics course. The idea behind that was that the intro to physics course provides students who maybe are more interested in a hands-on approach to science, the opportunity to take a course in that field. At the end of the freshman year, students typically sit for the MCAS Biology test. They then will be assigned either the biology or the intro to physics, physics, science, MCAS test, depending on the course that they chose. And then we're really excited to include marine science in our science courses, partnering always with our community partners in collaboration. And we were really excited to offer that course this year.
And can I just add-
Yes, please.
...before you move on? So on the Principles of Biomedical Science, I want to definitely give a shout out to Dr. Bardley. That course is being offered through a grant with Project Lead the Way. And this is the first in what will ultimately become a three-year pathway. And so we're taking one course at a time. Next year, we'll add a second course. So we'll have two for the pathway, and then we'll offer a third, the third year. So we're pretty excited to have gotten that grant, and sincerely appreciate Dr. Bardley's work on that.
There aren't, there weren't many changes to the social studies course offerings. We are resurrecting Intro to Psychology. So this is a course that we've offered in the past and retired for, for a year, and now we're bringing it back. So it's not a totally new course, but it is a new offering for our students for next school year. Our English for Language Learners, we wanted to add one more layer of support for them. So we have added the English as a Second Language, English Language Arts, emerging early level of support for them. In addition to that, we've included a reading acceleration for multilinguals. So this is going to provide students who need extra academic support to increase reading and comprehension skills that are necessary for their academic success. So we're very excited to be able to provide this support for our multilingual students.
And we should mention here also that these, this came about with a lot of work with Ms. Obie in the L Department, and Catherine Norton, who is our new coach, which we sincerely appreciate having that position this year, and working with our ESL teachers as well.
And in addition to our content areas, we also have some new and exciting courses in the area of wellness. So we are offering Wellness 1 is a year-long class for our freshmen. That includes both our physical ed topics, as well as our health topics, for a year-long course for our freshman students. Sophomores and juniors then took what we called Wellness 2.3. We are now just offering a Wellness 2 course for our sophomores. So only sophomores will be in the Wellness 2 class. And then we've, we've added some really exciting elective offerings for our juniors and seniors. So as a freshman, you'll take Wellness 1. That is a year-long. As a sophomore, you'll take Wellness 2. That's a semester-long course. And then as junior and senior, you will need to take additional electas, but then you get to choose from these four elective options: recreational activities for life, team sports, contemporary health, and personal fitness. So we're very excited about those offerings. Really focusing on teaching students how to take ownership of their own wellness and build physical activity and leisure sports into their daily life. Full descriptions of those courses are in the Program of Study, to give you a better idea. And then, in our music department, we're offering Rock Legends, the history of rock music, which is very exciting. Music in Film, which is helping students to take a look at how scores are designed and soundtracks are developed. So that's really interesting. And then Rock Band. So Rock Band is like our instrumental ensemble, but it's geared toward rock music. And so for students who are more interested in rock music, they could take Rock Band. In our vocational and technical department, we are bringing back what used to be landscaping is now called Intro to Sustainable Horticulture. So we'll be talking with students about how to learn about the horticulture field. And then also Intro to, there we go, Intro to Sustainable Agriculture. So teaching students how to produce food here on Nantucket.
That course will-
That could be-
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
That course, we're partnering with Sustainable Nantucket, and students will have an opportunity to learn the equipment and the machinery that they use for farming on the island, as well-
Yes, thank you.
-as our own community garden. So they'll have an opportunity to work through that as well.
Yes. New next year will be our Nursing and Allied Health 2 class. We currently offer an Introduction to Nursing and Allied Health, but now we're going to take students to the next level in this area, learn more about the nursing practice and the allied health field. And then we're also offering a Boat Operations course, which will provide students a full Massachusetts boating safety course in order to earn their boating license. So that's very exciting for our students. So we're trying to think of pathways to help our students develop the skills, and in some cases, the certifications, to go out into our community here on Nantucket and be successful, but also contribute to our community and its growth. The English Department, World Language Art and Special Services, did not have any major changes for next school year, so we just wanted to make note of that. And now students are embarking on the course selection process. So we met with our sophomores, our incoming sophomores, who our freshmen got to meet today to talk about what they're going to do at the next stage of high school. And on Thursday night, we'll be meeting with grade eight students and parents to welcome them to high school, tell them all things exciting that are high school, Nantucket High School, and also to go over the course selection process with them. So the first step in the course selection process is we talk with teachers, and teachers make recommendations with their students on what courses they think they would best be served taking in the next year. So those recommendations are really important, as students work to gather all the information they need to make informed choices. We also ask school counselors to meet with each grade to discuss the selection process, and we hope that students will be meeting with their families to make those course selections. And they can do that right into Aspen through our online course selection process.
Ms. May?
No questions at the moment.
Laura?
No, it looks great.
Thank you.
Exciting.
All right.
Very.
It's a lot of work, but thank you so much.
You're so welcome.
Your questions is-
What about school to career? And I'm thinking primarily the hospital.
Yeah.
Still there.
Yep. So we're still continuing our school to career. That's a really important avenue for our students to go out into the community and gain skill in an internship-type program. So we hope to still continue that. We're looking to expand our school to career options. Shonda Bartlett is the coordinator for school to career, so she does a lot of work going out into the community, opening up new paths and avenues. We have students that have been working in the dental field and have then graduated high school and gone into that field. We have lots of students who have been successful at the hospital, gaining experience in the medical field. We have students that are in the HVAC, plumbing, electrical, so really giving kids some hands-on- So really giving kids some hands-on, real-world skills so that they then can graduate and go out into the community or go on to higher learning to get more certifications and qualifications to then come back and work in our own community.
And Dr. Leffery, to your point on the hospital, the nursing two that is part of the plan is partnering with the hospital. We've actually already met with them. They have a great SIM lab there that they have offered up that we would be able to potentially be able to do lab work for our students there. Of course, that's all in the details. And we'll be working with Dr. Bardley and Ms. Bartlett to finalize that. So right now, it's about, you know, do we have the number of students that are interested in the nursing two, which we'll find that out through the recommendation process.
Okay, well, I was interested in, it was mentioned that medical staff need today that they were talking about six students. I'm not sure if it's split up into two semesters, but I think it's important because right now, the hospital is operating on a large number of nurses that are coming from off-island and staying 13 weeks and then getting out of here. And we're starting to grow some nurses. And I think it's important that if we have students that are interested in it, to really avail themselves of that opportunity.
Yes, as do we.
And also, you know, we'll also be partnering, I don't know where, oh, there she is. We'll be partnering also with the community school with this CNA program that they're working on to partner, I think it was at Cape Cod Tech? Yeah, so with Cape Cod Tech. So it's definitely an area that we see the need for. I have to tell you that when we went to the hospital, the SIM lab that they have was so impressive. And I think that our students will really benefit by being able to be part of that.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine?
I actually have two questions. So for the Principles of Algebra and Geometry, is that supposed to be geared towards like juniors and seniors more?
It could be geared toward any level, but it's really a student who needs an extra year of algebra concepts before they go into geometry. So probably will be geared more towards sophomores or juniors so that they are best prepared for geometry and then Algebra Two.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't sure if it was meant to be for, I was like, either one. But, and my second question was for the Rock Band? If we have band in the Rock Band, would their concerts be in the same, like, would they have the same, like, concert time or would they have like two different, like?
It'd be the same.
They would be the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
We think that there might be some crossover of students there anyway.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense, too. Thank you.
Just different genres, so it's given, so we hope that through this and through the presentation that what you're seeing is that we're trying to offer more student choice because we truly believe that this is the time that students have an opportunity to explore what they might want to go on to after high school, whether it's, you know, additional education or not. So we're trying to add more options to help them do that. And, you know, I truly believe, and I know that Ms. Saradellis and I have talked about this, is that at the junior and senior level, they should have some options on what they're taking in high school so that it matches up better with what they want to do beyond high school.
Terrific. Thank you.
If I may through the chair, I just want to thank Principal Vassal and Assistant Principal Saradellis because this has been one of my important, basically, one of the things that I've wanted to see grow. And I'm really pleased because in my superintendent's findings report from last year, that was one thing that in talking with the community and particularly the students themselves, they were looking for more options to connect and to build within the community so that they could have a pathway if they decided that college was not at the moment. I'm really pleased to see some additional offerings.
Thank you for saying that. And I want to say too that I want to make sure that we show our appreciation to our department leaders because I think they have done a lot of work. They have spent a lot of time talking with their departments and students. The curriculum directors have done a lot to help us as well. Dr. Raybold is already talking about things that we can do with social studies and English going forward. So that will probably be next year's presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to move on to a debrief and discussion around the master campus-wide plan, Phase Nine. I'd like to preface my remarks, I will preface my remarks, by saying there's been some misinformation that's been shared out in the community about the February eighth School Committee Workshop. There was a miscommunication, probably on my part, regarding invitations of outside guests to the February eighth School Committee Workshop. As I did not apparently share the names of the PFAS scientists with the School Committee Clerk prior to the posting of the workshop agenda. In no way did the School Committee Clerk or Superintendent's Office intentionally omit the scientists from the agenda, and the issue was rectified. So, discussion around the master plan, which I think is probably a moot point because we really don't know what it is at this point.
If I may, I do have a statement that I'd like to read from this, on behalf of the Campus Wide Master Plan Committee. So at our most recent Master Wide Campus Plan Committee meeting, the difficult decision was made to put some of the proposed work for the high school and middle school athletic complex on hold. All work associated with the Bacchus Lane Fields is still moving ahead as planned and designed. We have shared this information of this change in the scope of work with the town of Nantucket, FinCom, and the prospective bidders. At this point, the immediate goal is to focus on getting the natural grass baseball fields and tennis courts at Bacchus Lane constructed, which is still an important part of the Phase Nine of the Campus Wide Master Plan. It is unclear whether the community support for the portion of the project behind the high and middle school, which focuses on replacing the current natural grass athletic fields with a safer, more durable, and cost-effective option using turf instead of natural grass, is where it needs to be, the community support, in order for a successful outcome at town meeting and election. For that reason, the committee decided to pause the project, not necessarily change the scope, in order to educate everyone by continuing to investigate the individual citizens' concerns, research and compile recent and relevant peer-reviewed scientific data in response to those concerns, and to present findings to the community. The committee will also take this opportunity to continue sharing the huge benefits of Phase Nine as part of the overall master plan to the Nantucket Public Schools Athletic Program and the entire island community. However, taking this pause does not help us solve the issue at hand. We must find a way to provide athletic fields that can sustain the amount of use by our Nantucket student athletes. Therefore, the committee will be seeking to create an ad hoc committee tasked with investigating alternate locations on island that could be used in the interim or converted to athletic fields that are, that are, excuse me, or converted into athletic fields that are safe, not those that are unsafe or out of MIAA compliance. We invite members of the community who are dedicated to the well-being of our athletics program to seek solutions to the predicament of the athletic fields. We owe it to our Nantucket Whalers to give them a safe and usable area to play and compete.
Any comments?
No.
One?
No, thank you.
I would just say thank you to the committee for taking a step back. I know there's been an amazing amount of time and effort and hours that you've all put into it. And I appreciate that. But I also think that it's probably the wise thing to do right now is just take a step back and reevaluate and research what we can do if there are alternatives. So I really appreciate the work of the committee. Thank you.
I would only say that I disagree with a lot of the thought in that. I don't know that we're going to get any smarter. And I continue to think that injecting PFAS into our water is probably not a great idea. But that's just my opinion. So we'll move on, committee discussion and votes to be taken. A vote to approve payment to NCTV services, outside contractual agreement between NPS and NCTV for the February eighth, 2022 School Committee Workshop in the amount of $1,085.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation from the MIT Club of Cape Cod STEM Mini-Grant to NHS Math and Robotics in the amount of $500.
So moved.
Second.
A vote to approve the donation from the Nantucket Police Charitable Association, miscellaneous items to Nantucket Elementary and Intermediate Schools, approximately $3,837.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation from Stop &amp; Shop Blooming for Good Program to NPS, $140 and $220.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to release and close the Class of 2021 Balance of Funds from the NHS Student Activity Accounts in the amount of $8,759.20.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you, perhaps you might explain to the new members what we're doing with that. Molly, you're looking for that.
We are talking about the... Thank you.
The Class of 2021 Balance of Funds.
So with the Class of 2021 Balance of Funds, it is, hold on, I need to find where this, which one is this? This one right here, okay. To release and close. Class of 2021 is from the previous class. So at this point, they will be releasing the funds and closing that. So we no longer will have access to that. The motion is... After the minutes. Thank you, right here.
On motion duly made and seconded, Nantucket School Committee approves the balance transfer of $8,759.20 from the NHS Agency Account to the Nantucket Student Activity Account. A vote to approve the amended policy EB CFA face masks.
If you notice at the end of your packet, you will see the amended policy, which is... If I can get it myself, my apologies. There we go. EB CFA. It is the policy that we discussed at our last meeting. There were no changes that were expected, so it is the same as what we saw before, as long as everyone is content with that.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Beth, you want to say something since we're talking briefly about face masks, the research you've done?
Sure, so I have, what I have noticed and what I have heard from my colleagues on the Cape and Islands, there was a superintendent's meeting on Friday last week, that no one has seen any spikes after the vacation week. So that is very, very positive, and we're pleased to hear that. That said, continuing this week for, just for security and moving on for no masks starting on Monday will be the plan unless the school committee otherwise.
Move to approve the February first, 2022 Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The February eighth Workshop Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The February twenty-third, 2022 Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
And transfers and invoices.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just be nitpicky? Both are...
I would expect.
C and J, we didn't have a full vote. We had a motion made in second, but we didn't fully vote.
I said vote, I voted.
But we didn't all go aye, that's all. Just again, I said it was nitpicky. Can we do that? Can we just all say aye on the vote for C, which was the donation?
The vote to approve the donation from the MIT Club of Cape Cod STEM Mini-Grant to NHS Math and Robotics Club in the amount of $500.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And J.
And for J.
The February twenty-third, 2022 Meeting Minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm happy now.
Transfers and invoices.
We said aye.
Did that when you got me out of order?
Sorry.
Okay, Subcommittee Work Group, anybody got reports?
I have a Cape Cod Collaborative Meeting tomorrow. So I'll work with you.
And policy.
And we have policy meeting tomorrow. It's a busy day.
Are you going off for that?
I'm not, I'm going to zoom in.
Yeah.
And negotiations continue.
Continue.
Ahead. Catherine?
So, winter sports are currently ending soon. Today, the boys hockey team is going off to play with Martha's Vineyard. And they were streaming it at the CPS Cafeteria tonight. So that's very exciting. I hope they do well. And as Mrs. Saradellis mentioned, rising seniors, juniors, and sophomores all had their orientations for course selection, and they will all meet with their counselor to choose their courses. And freshmen will have theirs with their parents later on this week. So that's exciting for the rising freshmen, since they're going to be in a high school now, so. Kind of exciting time for them. And before the break, we had a PFLAG representative come to the island, which PFLAG stands for Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays, to talk about LGBTQ plus topics with interested students who wanted to have like a Q and A session with the representative. So that was good. And next Thursday is the opening day for the Addams Family Musical. And I'm very excited because my friend is in it, so I'm going to go watch it.
Wonderful.
Yeah. And this week, the Batman Tournament is beginning, so that's great. I don't think we've had one since COVID, so I've already seen a lot of students sign up and talk about it, so that's great. And there are many volunteering opportunities available for students. Ones that I know are from the Hospital Thrift Shop, Nantucket Dreamland, and Our House, from what I've seen. So, yeah, and that's great. And the last thing that I have is that Student Council will be meeting next Tuesday to talk about future spring events for the students. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, Catherine.
Catherine, will you be extending an invitation to Dr. Hallet? Since Mike Cozart used to participate in the...
I will be happy to play. Whoever has the pleasure to beat me will be happy.
Can we get this on Channel 18?
I do have a little tennis experience, not much, but...
Okay, I would like to say before we get to the agenda for the next meeting, we passed on our retreat. And I was wondering how the committee felt about perhaps having that retreat on the fifteenth. I don't know.
Of this month?
It's a week, yeah, a week from this week. So it would be next Tuesday.
Esmeralda, he was the most impacted.
I'm okay with it.
And it would be at six?
It could be five or six, it's up to you. We can adjust it if you would prefer six.
So the fifteenth?
I have a meeting until 5:30, but I could certainly do six.
Six o'clock, okay.
How's that feel?
Yep, that's fine with me.
And we will most likely have it, although I haven't spoken with the facilities director, but most likely it will be in her office. So we will have that there.
Beth, you want to talk about the agenda for the next meeting?
So for March 22nd, we will bring the Student Success Program All Ed with Mr. Vasselli, a science curriculum presentation, the friends of Nantucket Public Schools we hope to have with us. And after our retreat, we hopefully will have some discussion and presentation on school committee progress and goals.
Good.
And that's it.
Does anybody have anything else?
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.